Okay, at this point I'm going to open the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees, and as always, we'll start with a pledge.
...to apply in the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you please call a roll?
Trustee Mathis.
Here.
Trustee Gifford.
Yes.
Trustee Rizzo.
Here.
Mayor Casper.
Here. Item number three is put to the floor. Seeing that there's no one here but our employees, I'll skip privilege to the floor and move right along to the public hearing for the 2015 to 2016 budget. You guys had before a packet that just kind of outlines the budget itself, and just for Kevin's sake, I used to do a real presentation, have a screen, and, but these are the people I was presenting to, so now I just put it in paper form and go through it. So, doesn't give you anything you know, but I save the best for last, so I'm looking ahead. And, let's go through it. For this budget, on the first page, we're projecting the cost of running the village for '15 to '16 to be $66,757,027. Our revenues to offset that, our revenues other than taxes, were projected to be $1,941,347. To additionally offset the cost of running the village beyond raising taxes, we're using $275,000 from the general fund, same as what we used last year, which means in order to fund the finances of the village for the coming year, we need to levy taxes to the tune of $4,540,680. The net assessment of the village is $366,299,838, which if you divide that out by what we have to raise in taxes, gives you a rate of $12, and if you round it, $12.40 per thousand, which is a 1.38 percent increase in the tax rate. So, that's the budget as presented. If you go to the next page, I just want to give you an idea of some of the drivers for costs in the village here. If you look all the way back to 2001, you can see that our expenses have risen at a pretty predictable and steady rate. You know, those are driven by salaries, contractual obligations, insurance costs, utilities, all of the things that we pretty much know about and can predict every year. You see our revenues, you could pretty much call them a straight line. It is kind of good news that you see a fairly moderate rise from 2010 on, but that's a result of some actions that we take, including things like in our court, increasing our fees and implementing some more fees, some public safety initiatives that we've taken. But obviously, the interest that we would use to rely on revenue for, there's no interest-bearing accounts anymore. Mortgage taxes even down, people have gone through the whole boom of doing refinancing and stuff, so we're not seeing those revenues either. If you go on to the next page, our health care is another huge driver for us. You take a look at the blue line, that's our health insurance, and again, steady increases that we all knew about. The nice thing, the plateau at the top, those are the flat renewals that we've had for the last three years. I read an article in the Gazette this weekend that talked about some companies don't think that these employee wellness programs are worth the time and effort they put in. I think if you look at those flat renewals compared to what the trend had been in the past, those have really paid off high dividends for us. The sharp drop is our change to new high deductible plan, and once again, we had, what was it, a 3% renewal this year? So, it didn't exactly go to zero like in the past, but 3% is way better. Most are averaging around 10% right now. So, we're still doing well, or as well as we can in that case. The next page is pension, our employee retirement contribution. We all know what's happened here, but I kind of want to use this page just to point out that this is the issue that we're having with the state now. So, you know we've got the 2% tax gap. We know that the state now is reimbursing our residents for their property tax levy, but what essentially they're doing is they're taxing them on their income and then refunding that tax for the property tax, and then saddling us with this cost. So, if you look back in 2003, I first entered politics in 2002. 2003, our contribution was almost nothing. The state paid the entire bill for the pensions for our employees. Then they changed their policy, we had to start contributing, and it jumped a pretty phenomenal amount, but that's what we needed to get used to. So, things were adjusted, it went along, small up and downs, and then suddenly we had to crash the stock market and sell for the state's mistake of investing all of the pension funds in the stock market. Instead of raising income tax to pay for that loss, it was saddled back on the village again, or the municipalities, and you've seen our costs skyrocket. So, finally, the stock market is coming back, there's a little drop in that, but we'll never get back to the program that the state used to have where they financed most of the pension cost. That's been shifted to us. So, that's why when you hear people in government mad at the state for this 2% tax gap and no relief from mandates, that's, I think, a very good indicator of what they're talking about. So, the good news on the next page for our budget is the things we were able to keep in the budget. The sidewalk grant program is still there, summer recreation program is still in place. Our continuing programs of replacement for vehicles and equipment in each of the departments was maintained. We put some money into the Flint House for the first time, and we've started this initiative in public safety where the sidewalks on Skimamarn, and then the following year, hopefully, we'll go to the sidewalks in Alamo for the kids that are walking to school. Turning to the next page, if you're a visual person like me and have trouble even reading numbers, much less figuring them all out, if you want to take a look at where each of the different departments in the village are financed and what their proportion to the entire budget, each department and area of the village takes up, you can look at that. The more important one to me is the next one, and this one I always, every year, encourage the trustees to fold up and put in your wallet. This would be the answer to the question if somebody says, "What do my taxes pay for?" So, if you've got a $125,000 house, a house that's assessed at $125,000, your tax bill this coming year will be $1,549.51. So, then, based on that, if you take a look at this graph, you can say, "Well, for police, I'm paying $318 a year, for DPW, $197 a year." So, you can actually put a value to the services that we are providing here in the village. When people ask me what I get when I pay my taxes, this is what I show them. So, that's a short summary of the budget as presented. At this point, I'm going to hold up the public hearings. Anybody who cares to be heard, the proposed 2015-16 budget. Seeing now, I'll close the public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion to adopt the budget as our 2015-16 budget.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second the motion. Any discussion?
I'd like to say something. Although, first of all, I'd like to commend all the department heads and mayor on doing a decent job, in my opinion, on doing the budget. I know that you guys stay within the guidelines the mayor put forth, and we are under the 1.97, so I think that's a great feat. But also too, per our work session meetings, I feel there's other ways that we can potentially decrease the taxes for residents or constituents, and I strongly believe where we are at the $12.40 per thousand is something we need to look at and work on going forward. And I presented a couple ways, and I plan on doing that in the future too as well.
Okay. Any other comments? Please call a roll.
Trustee Mathis.
No.
Trustee Gifford.
Yes.
Trustee Blackwood.
Yes.
Trustee Rizzo.
Yes.
Mayor Casper.
Yes. Item number five is, and thank you to everybody, including department heads, for your work on the budget this year. So, it was a pretty dry budget, and it was definitely the most bare bones budget that I've been a part of, but I think all the departments and heads, and I think you guys realize that this budget has ensured that we can at least supply the village with the needed equipment that's out there, and so we made a sacrifice operationally for the future of the village. Item number five, I know it's going to be a tough one, is to permanently appoint Ken Holme as fire chief effective March 17, 2015, so I will move as the appointing officer, I'll move to permanently appoint Ken Holme.
A second.
Any discussion on that one?
Those are very enthusiastic. From our fire department liaison.
What can you do?
Any other discussion?
Just got to ask Ken, with your guy next, you had the right answers, right?
Yeah. I hope so. Great.
We're proud of you, Ken.
Yeah, I think that, you know, I told you guys first, I told Ken first, actually. I told you guys next, and then we had staff meeting last week, and I told the staff. And everybody's happy for you, Ken. It's not like we thought it was going to be a surprise at all, but I know those tests are grueling, and when you walk out of the testing area, everybody's taking any of the tests that's given through civil service, tells me they have no idea how they did, and so it's got to be a relief for you too.
It is.
So, I'm just going to say keep up the good work, that's all. Any other? Please call a roll.
Trustee Mathis.
Yes.
Trustee Gifford.
Yes.
Trustee Blackwood.
Yes.
Trustee Rizzo.
Yes.
Mayor Casper.
Yes. Item number six, just to authorize the mayor to sign the June 1 renewal for CHP, which is our health care plan.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Please call a roll.
Trustee Mathis.
Yes.
Trustee Gifford.
Yes.
Trustee Blackwood.
Yes.
Trustee Rizzo.
Yes.
Mayor Casper.
Yes. Item seven is to authorize me to sign the June Perseverance with Advantage Health Plan, which is what we use for our retirees.
I'll make the motion.
A second.
Any discussion on that one? Call a roll.
Trustee Mathis.
Yes.
Trustee Gifford.
Yes.
Trustee Blackwood.
Yes.
Trustee Rizzo.
Yes.
Mayor Casper.
Item number eight is authorize the mayor to sign the June 1 renewal for our dental plan.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion on that one? Call a roll, please.
Trustee Mathis.
Yes.
Trustee Gifford.
Yes.
Trustee Blackwood.
Yes.
Trustee Rizzo.
Yes.
Mayor Casper.
Item number nine is to approve the status for firefighter Mike Geller for his 207A.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion on that one? Please call a roll.
Trustee Mathis.
Yes.
Trustee Gifford.
Yes.
Trustee Blackwood.
Yes.
Trustee Rizzo.
Yes.
Mayor Casper.
Item number 10, we're going to do this in two because we've got one conflict of interest apparently, so item number 10 first is to approve volunteer Molly Hay.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion on that? I'm only going to say I've known Molly since she was, I don't know, probably 10 years old, and she's great, so. On paper, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And then, approval of the volunteers, Zach Gerard.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? Is there anything about helping their families or anything?
Yeah. You'll all see, you'll all see. His actions will speak for himself.
Okay. On paper, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I abstain.
Item number 11, my comments to board. I could not believe how many comments I had since I just saw you last week.
We believe it.
Oh, yeah. So, let's see, this morning I was able to attend the bid meeting. They wanted an update from the village. I gave them that, and a couple things that they did while they were there, they're looking at buying new and expanded banners for Long Avenue. So, they're a shorter banner, they want one on each of the decorative light poles, and they'd like to be able to change them out for when we have the events like the car show, and these new banners that they want are smaller, they're full color, they're the same ones that Schenectady has, and they're like a third of the price of the old larger ones, so they can afford to change them over. So, they're going to do the special event ones first, and then as they get more into it, get, you know, the variety that they want. So, I think that's a good thing for them. They also had a person that does media advertising, they're looking at a radio campaign where each business helps to contribute to the radio campaign to try to get more people coming into the downtown. They have taken, this is not a brand-new initiative, but with Charlie Palmer taking over his chair, they've got a Facebook page, and they had offered a Facebook contest of some sort, I don't know because I don't Facebook, but it was their first stab at it, and it wasn't as successful as they hoped, so it's a project in progress. And then, Jack Collins has been retained as an ambassador for them, so since everybody in the village knows who Jack is, he'll be going from business to business to see if he can get some of the businesses that aren't really very active in the bid to start participating. So, those are all positive stuff. You may have noticed on your way in here that the dangerous double poll right at the door to our meeting room is gone. I met with Verizon and Time Warner yesterday regarding the double polls in the village and the list that Andrew had generated. I learned a couple of things. First of all, those polls are jointly owned by all three entities, so it's 70% NIMO and then split evenly between the other ones that are on there. I said that didn't matter, you know, our law would apply to the primary owner of the poll. And now they have a database, it's called Engines, and that database that polls get put into so that each utility knows. So, if NIMO puts a new poll in, they're supposed to input that into Engines, and then the next one would be Time Warner. They know that there's a new poll, and it's time for them to come and move it, and then they input into the database, and then Verizon come and do theirs. They were shocked to know that we had 270-some double polls. They said that they would start immediately. My meeting with them was yesterday, and that poll is gone today. I showed them the ones that were priority that were considered dangerous, and they said they would be gone within two weeks, that those will be gone. They said after that, it may take a little more time because NIMO, when they put the polls in, they sub out the job, so they can put 25 polls in, they just sub out contractors and put them all in at one time, whereas Verizon and Time Warner have to use their manpower. They don't get extra help, so it takes them longer to get off the poll because they have to use the manpower that they have. So, anyway, it was a very positive meeting. I told them we weren't looking at enforcing our law anytime soon, but it was on the books so that they knew that they had to come and do it. They understood it completely, and I was actually kind of pleasantly shocked by the level of cooperation, so. So, when Andrew gets back, I'm going to dub it back on him, but I did something good. Got the notice from Church Next Door City View that their annual barbecue is Friday, May 8. The village law will be closed so that they can use that for the barbecue, but if you're looking for a good dinner on Friday, May 8, they'll have their chicken barbecue over there. Got thank you notes from, we had two passions, Bob Powell, longtime planning board and other things volunteer, and then the wife of Kurt Baumacher, Sharon Baumacher. We had those two pass away, we had sent flowers for each of those, and I got thank you notes from both people thanking us for our remembering those people. Talked to Art Olson today from Olson Sign regarding my idea for that banner to go across the bridge that goes in and out of the village rather than trying to get the railroad to paint it, which is problematic because it's over state highway. Put the banner out like they do in Mechanophile, it's far enough away so their kids can't tag it, and it looks nice, and it's a permanent fix. My idea is to present that to CSX and say, "Rather than us making you paint it," because we have a law that says they have to. Rather than making you paint the bridge, if you pay for this banner to have it installed, that'll be good enough for the village. Art's going to give me a price, and we'll see. And he's also putting together, Jim, for you, he's putting together a price for the electronic sign. I told him you had said 12 grand, but I didn't know where you got the price, and he said, "Well, I've done, we're doing a lot of them. I'll get you a good price for it too," so have a realistic price of what that'd be. I think I told you guys when we were in conversation there, but I'll be forwarding you probably tomorrow. I've got the final report and recommendation from the Dog Park Committee, and then I have from the Planning Board a Complete Streets action plan. That's a draft, and they wanted to flesh out. So, the Dog Park Committee, we just want to hear their report. They've got a budget and everything else as far as this dog park, so I'll let them report what they came up with. The Complete Streets is a little more involved because they want to put this action committee together, would involve the school district and some other stakeholders. I called Lisa Holst, who's the chair of our planning board, and I said, "I think the first thing would be to get the entire Board of Trustees up to speed and on board, and then move forward with the action committee." So, she'll be addressing us at a work session next time. And I'll send you both those documents tomorrow so you have them. Remember I told you guys that we had the church that was going in at the Grand Union Plaza, and they're going to require a special use permit? They missed the planning board meeting, and there were some concerns from the fire department and our code enforcement officer about the space they were using in areas, methods of eat grass, or whatever you call them, ways to get out of the building for the number of people that were in there. So, without going to the planning board, those concerns haven't been addressed, so they're behind the eight ball. So, the planning board is looking at doing a special meeting. If their concerns are addressed and the planning board comes forward with a positive recommendation to us, I'd like to be able to call you guys and see if we can get three people together to do this special use permit, because what happened to them is they got behind the eight ball. I think they have one more Sunday left where they're meeting, and then they don't have a place for the church to meet. So, I said, "We'll do what we can, but we can't rush it. Yes, it'll be done correctly." So, if it works out that way, I'll call you guys and see if we can come. I wanted to just make sure that, I think each of you got in your mailbox the flyer for the NICOM training session, it's May 3 to 5. If you take a look at that, if you didn't get it in your mailbox, I can send you the link to the, it's got all kinds of stuff in there. I'll be fresh packed from Jamaica, so I'm sure I'm not going there because I don't see anything real new in it, but.
When? 3 to 5?
I think I sent you guys the link.
So, take a look, see if there's anything you're interested. If there is, we'll sign you up for it, and you can go to that. I spoke with the mayor of Ilion today. Their village is almost a mirror image of the village of Scotia. I had visited them one time when we put the municipal docks in because they had municipal docks, so we went up and saw how they ran theirs and talked to their dock master and talked to the mayor. They also run ambulances there and have been for quite a number of years, so I called their mayor to get some dates. Ken and I will go up and talk to their mayor and police or fire chief, and just get an idea what their program looks like, their call volume. I need to be educated, I don't know a lot about it, so I figured if I talk to the mayor and we talk to the chief, we'll at least see what their program looks like. They're within about 50 people of our population, they're almost exactly the same size square mileage-wise, so I think they're a good model to look at just to see how a small village does transport. And then finally, that's why I had to talk to Jim. I called DEC today, and, actually, I called Lisa Holst. So, on our planning board, we have this New York State DEC expert in bats, and we have Lisa Holst, who works for DEC Department of Fisheries. So, I called Lisa because for our summer program, I thought it'd be great if DEC came down there and sane lakes so the kids could see what kind of fish lived in the lake and all that. And we had a donation last year for fishing equipment, and that turned out to be one of the most popular programs. So, it turns out DEC not only will come and sane the lake for public education, they also have a whole fishing program that they could give to Jim's counselors, so looking forward to that contact, and Jim thinks it's a great thing too, so I'll let you know how that works out. And those are my comments. Item 12, correspondence, liaison, special committee reports. Trustee Mathis.
Nothing to report.
Trustee Gifford.
We didn't have a fire department meetings tomorrow. We did have, in your obituaries, one of our longtime volunteers, Burke Alley, died last week too. Who went to his wake. Planning board, you stole most of the fire. We had a meeting, we talked about 147 sack, and the people weren't there, like you said, and then we talked about 25 Mohawk again. And it was interesting because Angelo was there and was taking control of his engineer, but it was kind of fun. They're working on what we need.
I heard Lisa did a good job. I heard Lisa did a good job.
She's amazing.
You know, when Jenny left, I was worried because you don't know, Jenny was so excellent, but kind of a good one, Lisa, so good. Trustee Blackwood.
Nothing to report.
Trustee Rizzo.
We got a meeting of the Memorial Day Committee. We're putting together all the bands and getting the groups put together. We're working on the grand marshals, and your uncle's name's come up, so we're waiting to hear from another guy. If that doesn't turn out, I think we're going to try to get in touch with him. So, we're moving along, and everything looks good. We're going to have the same number of parades, the groups we had last year. We had some funds left over, so there's no cuts or anything we can do, so financially we're doing okay. That's all.
Did you make any mention of my idea of having the village lead the parade?
Oh, jeez, no I didn't, but we still got time for that.
Good.
I'll make a note on that.
Item number 13 is departmental reports. Any questions or comments on the departmental reports? Anybody care to move to accept them?
I'll make the motion.
A second.
Any discussion? On paper, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 14, auto claims.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? Please call a roll.
Trustee Mathis.
Yes.
Trustee Gifford.
Yes.
Trustee Blackwood.
Yes.
Trustee Rizzo.
Yes. Item 15 is the approval of the minutes from the special meeting of the Board of Trustees for March 3.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
On paper, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 16 is the special meeting of the trustees, the minutes of the special meeting of the trustees for March 10.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
On paper, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 17, there is the approval of the minutes for the March 11 special meeting of the Board of Trustees.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
On paper, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Is it a different set of minutes for the 2nd March 11?
The first was the work session that was held at 6:00, and then the regular meeting.
So, then 18th is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees on March 11.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
On paper, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And item 19 is the approval of the minutes of our special meeting on March 24.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
On paper, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Do the 31st.
Yeah, the 31st.
Get March all done.
Yeah, so approval of the minutes of the March 31 special meeting of the Board of Trustees.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
On paper, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any new business from any trustees? You know, I can't help it. Ken's given me a list. The fire department's doing cleanup, so Ken's given me a list of old and outdated equipment. We've got 1, 2, 3, 4 fire helmets that are all expired. We've got 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 turnout coats that are all expired. We've got 5 pairs of turnout pants that are expired. 2 jump printers, one was donated by trustee Gifford. Some light bars, a mini light bar, an old expired SCBA bottle, and a part to some jaws of light. So, anybody care to move to surplus those pieces of equipment, authorize the chief to get rid of them?
I'll make the, I'll second it.
Any discussion? On paper, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And then the last thing I have for you is, we're stepping into the twenty-first century, and we're just putting together a program where our residents can pay their tax bills online. So it'd be an online, either online credit card payment or an online check, but we haven't had that, and we'd like to have it, and we'd like to have it in place by the time our tax bills come due. So I think that the timing will work out well enough so that you can authorize me to enter the contract, but I want to make sure it's in place for when we start collecting for the tax bills, so I would like to ask if you guys would authorize me to sign the contract for the electronic payment provider upon the recommendation of our attorney's review of the contract itself.
Wait a second.
Who's the provider? Who's the proposed provider?
It's Value Payment Systems, it's all goes through BAS, our tax receiving software, and there's no cost to the village. The cost to, it's two point four or five percent with a credit card or a dollar seventy-five.
So we, so they have to pay the fee to?
They pay an additional fee to use this.
So wait, a dollar seventy-five is maximum?
A dollar seventy-five is for an electronic check.
Okay.
Two point four or five percent for a credit card.
When people pay for a credit, buy a credit card here, we actually have to collect the fee.
The credit card company does.
Now, if they do this, can we keep their card on file, and if they don't pay their taxes, can we just automatically?